I'm going to call the Springfield City Council work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Ben Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow.
Here.
Counselor Pishanary.
I'm here, thank you.
All right, we have two items tonight. The first one is the overnight parking program code change, and I don't know if Sandy or Christina is presenting. All right, come on up.
Parking program code change. This is a code change that is recommended by the city attorney's office. We're getting feedback. You okay? Okay. To address, to try to maintain some of the status quo around the current overnight parking program that is operating at Catholic Community Services during a recent zone change process that was intended to allow them to expand their operations under a city-sponsored grant. It was discovered, I guess we came to understand that they do not actually operate as a place of worship or a church from that location. And the overnight parking program is currently written to allow operation at churches and industrial locations. So this is a proposal to adjust that definition to include nonprofits that operate in somewhat of a similar capacity that churches do. It, we did get some feedback that locating these overnight parking programs at government or public sector locations may not be appropriate. So the original definition I was using came from the development code, social and religious institutions, which would also include things like community centers or other public sector properties. And so an attachment to, I showed those different types of social and religious institutions by different categories of uses, which would have included community centers. Because community centers are also often co-located with other types of services that might be incompatible to the overnight parking program. I would recommend that we actually adjust the code slightly from what is in your packet to reflect private religious and social institutions so that it would be clear that it does not include government programs unless those government entities apply under the code language that already exists for the internal shelter program. And that was a code that was adopted by the council several years ago, a couple of years ago. So it would leave open that existing option for governmental buildings to be used, but not for governmental uses for the car camping program. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Merrily.
Um, I didn't have a question. I read through it and I was, I like the way it's written. I like how, you know, what it, what is trying to do, what's it attempting to do? Offer an opportunity for more community partners to be able to offer that service. So I'm, I'm okay with how you've got it. And I like the clarification of the definition that you just gave.
Uh, Leonard.
So, um, could you describe the neighborhood that this new site is in? I mean, is it residential or where, uh, where, where is the site that's in question?
So this was brought forward because the, of the existing site that's at Catholic Community Services, which is on G Street in Springfield. Near, well, it's a G Street and 11th, I believe. The address is, yeah, 1025 G Street. So it's right between 10th and 11th. And so they've been operating there under the church provision, but they're not operating as a place of worship. They're offering, operating as a nonprofit entity at that location. So.
10th and G. Did that used to be a school?
Across the street.
Across from it. Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, I'm just trying to visualize where it is. Yeah. I, um, I, I checked the, uh, the phrasing on this new, uh, there, this new code change and it looked good to me. Thank you.
Corey.
So I just want to clarify the sort of public versus private. Would that still include like just nonprofits, like social service nonprofits?
It would include social service nonprofits that fall within the definition we're proposing, which would be property being used as a place of worship for providing charitable services to the public as a fraternal or civic organization. And then we would remove as a community or senior center since those are public uses. So it would include places of worship, charitable services to the public and fraternal and civic organizations. So it was intended to be those types of nonprofit uses that are public facing in a similar manner as a church or place of worship. It also gets the staff out of the position of questioning religious beliefs and determining if someone's eligible.
Right. And then my second piece of that, and I read it in here and I just wanted to like hear the clarification because some of those sort of private social service nonprofits don't necessarily, they might be on leased land. So they would still need to have like whoever the, the, the property owner, it look like would be the one who would have to permit it. Or does it, is it that still as leased land, if they're operating a social service or public non-private, whatever we're calling it, would still be able to do it? Does that make sense?
It would require permission of the property owner as written. We're not proposing to change that part.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Merrily.
I had one, one clarification and that is that even with the changes, it, it still falls under the requirement that it's 3,000 square feet to an acre, right? Is that, I mean, the, the, the size where anything would be offered still falls under that requirement. Is that correct?
That is correct. All of the same program standards would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe.
Thank you. So I, I'm getting mixed signals. Some people are looking at this as an expansion of the program and others are just a definition of the current program. And my understanding in looking at the materials presented, it's not necessarily an expansion. It just clarifying the definition. Is that correct?
It is a small expansion is how I would characterize it. Currently churches are eligible. There are about forty or so locations in Springfield that would fall under the definition of a church. I don't know whether those all meet the size requirements. Obviously they're not all willing or wanting or able to participate. This would add less than 10 potentially eligible sites based on what staff could identify. Now there might be other locations we didn't identify that might fall under this definition.
So that's, that's based on the diagram and amendment number two?
Attachment number two was just staff's identification of the example types of facilities that we could think of that would fall under, that would be part of the, I guess, expansion, the minor expansion of the program. We did not contact any of these entities or organizations and ask about their willingness to participate. I assume willingness to participate in the program will still largely be contingent on the council's decisions around providing funding for the program, which is entirely separate. So, and we're not proposing right now any changes to the way that council administers the program. So very small change in eligibility in terms of numbers intended to help you maintain the status quo.
Okay. So what I'm looking at too is that I'm, I'm a little at a quandary, kind of not, I don't know if upset is the right word and whatnot, but you've added that, that somebody, some staff have added some areas that are in their minds potential, but some of those areas, they cannot legally do it by their own policies. And so it kind of puts them in a spot where it's like others are looking at them saying, hey, let's, how about we can contact them and see about putting some, uh, some, some tent housing area for people that are homeless when those folks cannot by their own rules or policy even entertain that. So it's, it's, I just don't want people to look at this list and say, hey, let's contact these places and see if they'll do it when, when really it's putting them between a rock and a hard place. I'm working, I'm talking semi cryptic. So I don't want to put anybody on the spot. So, so I think, I guess what I'm saying is that these lists should, before they're put out in the public, should be approved to see if these organizations can even do it. So just take that for what it's worth. So there is, there is a couple of areas that they can't even do it. But I do want to go back to the document that you provided in the packet and it said, um, minimum requirements must be met to participate, comma. I'm on the, actually in the AIS under discussion financial impact, second paragraph about the second to the last line in that second paragraph where it says minimum requirements must be met to participate, including neighborhood compatibility. And I don't know if I've ever seen a definition of what neighborhood compatibility is and who makes that determination and what kind of process, decision-making process. So it is a, an objective look as opposed to a single person's subjective look. Just want to make sure that that we have some sort of process or there's, there's a, there's a, uh, rules on which, what, uh, an employee that they just got hired tomorrow can follow. That, just throwing that out there. I think, I think it'd be wise for us to have a, a objective process in which they determine the determination of neighborhood compatibility. Yet that seems very subjective. And then moving on, on the document, I also see that, that under, uh, under eight, zero, eight point zero one four, I'm sorry, one, two, paragraph three, under attachment, one page, three of three, where it's where it states, talk about a property owner who permits overnight shelter, shelter pursuant to subsection one may revoke the permission anytime and for any reason upon revocation of permission or for overnight shelter. The permittee shall leave the property intermittently. Will they, will they not fall under the rules of, of the FED process? And we cannot, no one can force them out immediately until that FED process has been exact expired or has been exhausted.
I can start back answering questions, moving backwards if that works.
Sure, sure.
The way this is written, it does not fall under the FED program because there are not being leased space and the program agreements that individuals sign make that clear. So we're not concerned about an FED eviction process for either the overnight parking program or for the indoor program that's under the same
Oh, good.
code. Regarding who makes the decision around whether something would be incompatible with the neighborhood or constitute a public nuisance. That by code is the city manager or the city manager's designee. So it's up to the city manager to make that determination or to decide who the appropriate person to make that designation would be. And then on your first point, it's certainly my apologies if any of the property owners depicted on this map thought it was representing that they should be lobbied as a future site. Tried to make it really clear in the discussion at the top of the attachment that these were not potential sites or the types of eligible uses. And so trying to, trying to give the council an example of what you're being asked to approve, acknowledging that it's difficult to do that without concrete examples. But apologies if that gave the wrong impression in the.
No, and I totally read that. I, I read that summary at the top and that kind of a disclaimer and, and I, I totally see where you're going with, but I'm just looking at it from some other property owner's perspective. Hearing about this and being named in these documents and potentially a site is for this type of program can, cannot, can actually cause consternation amongst that organization where they've been trying to deal with that on their own. So I just wanted to be, let those folks know that, that we're sensitive to that and that's not what we're doing. And then, then lastly, on, uh, number six on eight point zero one two, so paragraph or paragraph six, where you are indicated with private security services. I would, I would, I see how you scratched 181.870 subsection six. I, that's the definition of what a private security person is. And I, I would be inclined to leave that in there so that way people can refer to that directly to say, to see if, hey, is this person actually meets the definition of a private security provider? So that, that I would look at that and think about keeping that in there. And then you may even, you may even cite OAR two fifty nine dash zero six zero dash three hundred. And that's the Oregon administrative rules that define all these services and definitions of what, what, who has to be licensed to be able to do that.
Counselor, one eighty one eight seventy was renumbered to one eighty one A eight forty. And so that is the statutory reference I've included in there.
Oh, it's eight forty. Okay.
Keeping the statutory references and just updating from night watch person to private security services as used by the statute. So it was my intent to keep those definitions as used in the statute.
So was it remunerated to, was the eight seventy was, was it not remunerated to the eight forty subsection six?
It was renumbered to eight, one eight, eight, one eighty one A eight forty seven and eight. And I will note that I don't have a typo there. Um, I'll just make a note to triple check that statute. But the one eighty one was generally changed over to one eighty one A a couple of years ago.
That was the old one. Yep. And I don't know if you want to use the OAR, but it's, it's pretty explanatory. So if anybody wants any information whatsoever about this whole, that whole topic that they can dive into that OAR and it's pages upon page of definitions. So. I don't know. Appreciate that. Appreciate it. I think it's well constructed. Like I support the change on this code.
Yeah. And, and I, and I think that's a good call out about attachment to, right? Is just simply being an example from, for it to get us to understand what is actually, what are, what we're actually approving versus a list of people that are interested in participating in this project. And the reason I want to call that out is just to make sure that everybody's clear that that's simply a, 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 uh, attachment related to trying to get, show us the physical examples. Leonard, did you have something else?
Yeah, just very briefly, I, I can understand that there would be, when I read neighborhood compatibility, obviously there are going to be some instances where an overnight parking program is clearly not compatible, but there are going to be other instances where you just sort of wait for neighborhood response. And then you see if there's any way to mollify the people who have concerns. I mean, is that accurate?
That's accurate. And your current code that we're not proposing to change reflects that need to sometimes do that, either make changes in the way it's run, or if, if changes can't be made to terminate a program at a location, if it can't be in compliance on an ongoing basis.
Good deal. Thanks.
And just, I guess to follow up on that question, right? And that's the way the code has always been written and really delegates that authority to the city manager.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I'm looking around to see if anybody's got other questions. All right. I think we're ready to take it back to a, a public hearing when it's time.
This will come to you next week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, second item is the annual use of force report with Chief Shear.
Good evening, everybody. And just for, okay, I want to confirm with AJ that Lily and Sergeant Massey are going to be able to be on here as well. Perfect. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Before we begin, I want to introduce Sergeant Massey, who leads our professional standards division. PSD plays a critical role in the collection and the review of our yearly use of force data and the creation of this annual force report. So Sergeant Massey also plays a significant role in our accountability efforts within SPD and he is an integral part of our leadership team. He got assigned this role last year shortly prior to my arrival at SPD. And he has throughout this entire time continually demonstrated his commitment to improving our force reporting and accountability processes. He's also been instrumental in driving the acquisition and implementation this year of the IA Pro software that I've talked to you all about in the past. I also want to introduce Lily Wick who's here. She is our community outreach coordinator, but she's been assigned to professional standards for the last couple of weeks to help with the creation of this report and the analysis of our data. From her previous career, she has experience in data analysis. So we're extremely fortunate to have her step in this year to assist us until, until we're able to fill our upcoming crime analyst and use of force analyst position, which should be posted very soon. In April of 2020, SPD presented its first use of force report to this council. And that report stemmed from a settlement agreement between the city of Springfield and the estate of Stacy Kenny after a shooting death involving the Springfield Police Department. A culture of transparency in how SPD polices this community is a key component to building trust and legitimacy. And the use of force by police is a topic that demands a high level of transparency and a demonstrated effort to engage in ongoing improvements. A yearly reporting on force to include the amount of force used, the types of force used, the types and severity of injuries to everybody involved, the demographics of those involved. And transparency about lessons learned set us up as a community to experience and enhance sense of legitimacy in the work that SPD engages in. And of the six pillars of 21st century policing, this force data and the efforts that we engage in to reduce the need to use force and to reduce injuries, touch on all six of those pillars. And those include building trust with community, policy and oversight, leveraging use of technology, community policing and crime reduction, training and education and officer wellness and safety. So there's a lot in this report. I hopefully have all had a chance to look it over before tonight. There's a lot to cover. So I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Massey. And in order to have sufficient time to answer questions, and of course, if it's okay with you, mayor, I would ask that we hold questions till the end. So we have plenty of time to engage in that discussion once we get through the, the entire summary. So if that's okay with you, mayor, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Sergeant Massey at this.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Like the chief said, last year was our very first year of doing this. We had a pretty big year in 2001. Couple of things we're pretty excited for. One is the software. Everybody's been hearing about called IA Pro. We also implemented body cameras in 2001 as well. The chief and I are a hundred percent agreement with total transparency owning up to any shortcomings that we can learn and improve from. Throughout this report, we have been doing that and making notes to find ways to improve for next year and to dive deeper into this report and the capabilities the software has. It's a very good complex software. I'm confident in it. I back it up. Lots of agencies use it and it's definitely something that's going to benefit us in years ahead. I'm going to, uh, you guys have all the report in front of you. I'm going to break it up into different sections. I'm going to introduce what the IA Pro is. It's actually a two-piece software. The IA Pro software is what lives in my office. Out in the field, what line staff use is what's called blue team. I'll get more into that in a slide or two. And then we're going to talk about how it's entered by the line staff and how it's reviewed by management. And then followed by the data and the numbers and recommendations with conclusions. We went live in November of 2021 on the software. We had hoped to get live quite a bit earlier, but due to COVID and the vendor coming out, that was the soonest they could come and train us. Um, as an organization, we worked really well together and really worked hard to backfill the data into the system because we wanted to use this system because we talked about it, we wanted it, we got it. We backfilled everything into it that we could in efforts to compile this report for you today. Um, I'm going to try to define some definitions for you on the front end. I'm also known as police lingo or some things we might know, but other people don't know. A couple of different sections, major definitions is going to be use of force and show of force. Use of force, this could mean a compelling compliance or overcoming a resistance to an officer's command in order to protect life or property to take a person into custody. That's what an officer, and in this report, it categorizes it as a use of force. A show of force is a show of force directed at specific person to gain compliance. An example of that would be an officer displays a taser and tells the person they have their taser out. If they don't comply, they may get tased and then the person complies and gets placed in custody without any further incident. That would be a show of force. A police dog barking, them saying, we're going to send the dog. If you don't stop running, he stops running or she, and that's a show of force with the dog. We collect that data because we think it's important instead of just the uses as well. So you'll see in here different categories of show and use. The next slide, the link. So before the IA Pro and blue team software came, just a little back history and how we used to do it, an officer would have a use of force incident. They would type their report, print photographs with it, and then turn it into the ship supervisor. And that ship supervisor would review it, check it for accuracy and send it through to my office. And since we've now gone to the blue team, we've expanded the review approval process. We've added another layer and the blue team. So in the top left corner, that's the blue team icon. That's where the officer will click on that out in the field and they can fill this out while still out on ship on the road. And then they will go through and start doing their checkboxes of things. They're going to go into what kind of incident was it? What kind of force was used? Any injuries, injuries to them? Everything we would ever want to know. There's a silhouette diagram there that you can even put on there exactly where it occurred at on them and on the officer. Once they get that all together, then they send it to the supervisor who was on ship at the time of the incident. So there's a familiarity with them. They were on shift with them when it happened and then they can take it and start triaging and looking through it as well. Once the sergeant gets it, they're going to get the blue team, look at all the data that this officers entered. They're going to get the police report. They're also going to get any body camera footage and basically make a package deal and then review it all for completeness, accuracy. Making sure everything's within policy, making sure the video lines up with what the narrative in the report says. And once they feel that it has passed all that, then they set it up to their lieutenant, which would be the patrol commander. That patrol commander now is the new level that we've added. And they are going to do the same thing. Read the report, watch the videos. Everything gets looked at and it's traced and it's timestamped on who was in it, who was doing what. And then from there, it goes into my office electronically into the IA Pro data where it's converted and I just do minor cleanups of something where there, uh, something was missed of a, the input, the case number wrong with a hyphen or not with a hyphen, simple things like that. They can also during this process submit something directly to me or the chief of police if there's any misconduct or any other allegations as well. But the system is, it's very complex. It's good. We're still learning it. We're going to learn more about it. We've just barely dabbled into the capabilities of it. I know there's even more we can do with it. So we've already made some suggestions and I'm sure you'll have some as well. And I'm eager to hear what those are so we can adapt and pivot and accommodate those down the road. The next slide, Lily, please. This is going to be how the system counts use of force incidences. Basically, on the left-hand side is the event. That's what occurred. And then you'll see, this is a situation where two police officers could have eight uses of force. So this could maybe be like a street fight or something where there's three, three people involved. And over there on the category, those could be categories of what occurred or what force was used. And then on the right, that's going to total up to eight. And so how we do it is we're totally transparent. We wanted to say eight. You could probably count this as three because it's three people. We are counting each use of force, not each person. So we want it to be fully out exactly what we're doing, what was used. But it definitely shows how things can add up and it will document if the officer used one, one thing and then worked to the next thing. And it shows, you know, the common of what's being used the most by officers. There's a whole, whole array of different categories, which I'll get into a little more. We'll stay on that slide for now. Um, on page five of a use of force report, that's going to be the demographics. There's a pie chart. And it also flows on the eight, page six regarding age-related subjects. Uh, page nine is kind of where the data starts. This is where officers involved, they where a deadly weapon was introduced into their situation. So in 2021, we had a hundred and ninety events. Fourteen of those involve people who were confirmed to be armed with a deadly or dangerous weapon. That's going to be defined as an instrument or an article or substance specifically designed or potential capable of causing death or serious injury. Fourteen of those, somebody was armed with that and nineteen of them, the officer perceived that they had that. And the perception of that would be, it might not be visible to the officer, but the officer believes there was a weapon based on the subject's behavior, totality of the circumstances, including any information officers may have had before the event, reaching for a bag, witness information or something reported on scene. Another kind of hard time, a lot of agencies have had is training. In 2021, we were able to complete the Department of Public Safety and Standard Training requirements. They require police officers to have a minimum of eight hours of use of force training in a year. They also offer an extension to agencies who are not able to complete that due to COVID training restrictions, capacity issues, not being able to send people to trainings that got canceled. At Springfield Police, we opted to not. At Springfield Police, we opted to not apply for that and still move forward with training because we believe it's very important and not to let. Tactics and skills go static. Out of the eight required, Springfield Police was able to complete twenty-three hours of use of force training and various subjects. Let's see, you know, it's extremely important that we don't stop the training. We got very creative how we could do it. We ended up using online services, doing them during roll call. They were able to complete those while on ship, not on the road. So we just wanted to really keep that going. And it actually was pretty successful. Twenty-three hours out of the required ages actually pretty good for a year. Some more numbers. Effectiveness of some tools is what it's titled here, Tools of Force. Within the data, we discovered that a taser, discharge of a taser, that means the taser was applied. The trigger was pulled and activation occurred. Out of, out of that, that was the least effective tool. Out of the tasers, however, I don't want to discount that that still is a very important. And very good tool to use. It was still effective seventy-seven, almost seventy-eight percent of the time it was applied, it was effective. And the reasons why I wanted to point this out is because a lot of people in the public don't know why a taser wouldn't work. And in these cases, we looked into that to see why didn't they work? Why is it listed as the most ineffective one that we have? And it, things we found out was the person that it was used on, they had really heavy clothing on. And the, the darts from it were not able to stick. On one case, the subject was running away. That's kind of hard to, to get sometimes too. Another one was a level of intoxication was of such that had no effect on the person. And another one was another heavy clothing during winter time. That's kind of a, a common thing. So you'll see that in the report, but I don't want anybody to think that a taser is not an effective or a good tool to use. It's very good. And learning from this, we're going to make notations of this for training to kind of go forward because we want, we would like everything to be effective that we use. The second least effective, and I'll get to this one a little more later, is the leg in hand strikes. That was at seventy-nine percent effective. Lily, next slide, please. This is when we start getting into the weeds with the numbers here. The Springfield Police Department. Their, their phone rang fifty thousand times essentially. And they were dispatched officers to calls. Those calls for service up on the top could be CSO, cahoots, anything. Officers dispatched to calls regarding the same category, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. It's quite a bit. Out of those. Twenty-eight thousand calls for service, force was used a hundred and ninety different times by the Springfield Police Department. A show of force was ninety-three times. It's going to be a difference there, as I explained earlier. The Springfield Police Department arrested thirty, thirty-four hundred, thirty-five hundred people. Three thousand four hundred and eighty-three individuals got arrested. Resulted in a show of force, two point seven six percent of those people and a use of force was five point four six. So if you. If you do, do the math on that, that's a lot of people contacted with some sort of force. And there will be some categories down the road that you'll see what falls into those categories. I'm hoping some of the questions will be answered as we go along. Fluid on this. Next is going to be the police officer holds. And that is usually involves someone who's having a mental health crisis. That is when an officer deems that they are in danger to themselves or others and they take them on what's called a police officer hold. Where they are then transported to a medical facility for an evaluation. So the number at the bottom, you'll see that we used force on almost thirteen and a half percent on those. That looks high on the front end, but. A hundred and twenty-two of those, no force was used. They were able to do that. So I'm going to dabble on that a little later in the report as well. So we talk a lot about when force was used, when it was used, et cetera, but I like to also point out when it was not used. Those numbers usually are highlighted very much, I don't think. Force was not used in almost thirty-three hundred of the arrests. That's ninety-four and a half percent of our arrests did not have any use of force involved. I think that's a good number. For the size, everything we do always can, you know, you can look at it, see what we can learn from. But almost ninety-five percent of every, everybody that gets arrested, we don't use force on them at all. Lily, next slide, please. We're going on to the injuries. Okay. So this is involving injuries on the police officers. All police officers that got injured. There's categories of minor injury, complaint of pain, and then abrasion and laceration. On the front end, some of these seem like the same thing. And we're probably right. And that's part of the learning process of the software is how we can dissect that. And can be customized it to kind of put these in the one category. At the bottom number, you see that sixteen. Injuries were reported. So that's not going to be sixteen officers. There was actually nine officers that were injured. Sixteen is just how many injuries were told up. One officer could have two of these sections. That could have cut something open and had a minor injury or complained of pain. So we're going to look into that to see. What, what, what is that telling us and how can we collect that differently possibly? Next slide, Lily, to the subject injuries. So these are people who are under the arrest section. Got arrested and had some kind of injury. The left-hand side again is the injury. On the right is what occurred during that incident that caused that. The bottom number is sixty-three. And total people. Was forty-four. So out of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine calls for service, forty-four people were injured. One of the. One of the main contributors to that is going to fall under the. The hand and leg strike. That, that, that usually is the number one and I'll talk a little more about it, but that's where it's going to fall into. Twenty-five percent of the arrests we do result in an injury to either the officer or the subject. Seventy-four to seventy-five percent of them do not. The Springfield, the city of Springfield, we also have our own municipal jail. And last year in two thousand twenty-one, our jail accepted one thousand three hundred and eighty inmates. Now those inmates range from people brought in from the Springfield Police Department, the US Marshals. Eugene Police, Junction City Police and Coburn Police. And out of one thousand three hundred and eighty inmates that were booked, there was some use of force on fifty of them. Something that the data doesn't show unless we start reading each individual report, that is a question is. What is that a result of them coming off the road hostile? Is that, is that just, you know, a continuation of their behavior from when they came in on the police car or is that something that happened just in the jail? Control hold is the number one method used in the jail. And like before, I talked about how two place officers and three people could be eight uses of forces. The jail's actually a lot higher. Because if somebody in the jail needs to get their clothes off and be strip searched, for instance. There's going to be probably four jailers, one on each arm, one on each leg. So you got four employees now. Each one of those employees is doing what you're going to call a control hold, probably escort hold on the way there. And they're going to strip them and put them in there. So I mean, you could just off that one person have almost ten incidences. Hang on, my legs just went off. The jail kind of has a unique way and we're going to try to learn how to. Kind of go from that, but. A hundred and, a hundred and fifty-seven applications of some force were used at the Springfield Municipal Jail. And that's only, that's four percent of the total people booked in. For the Springfield jail. And that's including people that came from other areas that weren't, you know, Springfield citizens or something else from another agency as well. Next slide, Lily, please. So this is kind of while going through this and dissecting some of the data. We kind of learned some things or kind of raised an eyebrow out some things to maybe look deeper into. Doesn't mean something was wrong, but. It might be something we want to look further into. One of them earlier I mentioned was the police officer holds. That was thirteen percent of those had some kind of, some fashion. Of some use of force. The question is, why is that? So we started kind of looking into and seeing, well. Some things just happened, but also as an organization, we haven't had crisis intervention training for several years now. Things have changed possibly and that's something we're going to look at too. So one of the recommendations we have. Is to schedule some crisis intervention training in the early of this year. As much as COVID allows us to do it. We used to do a pretty big one and. We really as an organization don't use COVID as an excuse. We still need to keep moving forward and be successful and keep trying to strive and be better at everything we do. So we're trying to be creative to figure out a way to do that, but that's definitely one of the recommendations we have. The second recommendation is going through this report and how we have this new approval process. We make the officers input. Their data into the blue team software, which I get later on the back end of it. It's not in our policy. And so one of that is we're going to put it in our policy that they shall complete. The blue team entries and the, the process of which it gets reviewed. And or diverted for misconduct to me will be laid out in there as well. But we definitely need to have very clear, exactly this is what we need to do. This is how it needs to be done and put it in there very clear. For all of staff and management to know how to process these. Number three, this is going to go back to the hand and leg strikes. We're going to take a closer look at this. To be honest, it's probably a historical high number for hand strikes to cause injuries. According to our system and the data that we put in. Thirty-eight percent of all of our officers' injuries were a result of a leg or a hand strike, which was only effective seventy-nine percent of the time. Those in management are know if you break your hand, they don't recover in two days. It's very costly to the city and there's a lot of downtime. So if we can prevent that, that'd be great. That same, that same use of force also contributes to thirty percent. Of the subjects that were arrested to their injuries. So what we're going to take a look at that data, we're going to further analyze it and discuss with our control tactics team, our command staff, our training staff. We're going to try to find possible alternatives to reduce injuries and increase effective arrest going forward. Number four was it involves pepper spray. We looked at this and said, no one use pepper spray. It doesn't mean they couldn't or they shouldn't, but was why and. Pepper spray is known to be kind of an aerosol. Cloud sometimes when you, when you use it and people might be scared to use it. You sprayed indoors. A good example, someone said is at a movie theater. My security guard, I believe sprayed it in the movie theater and the whole theater had to get evacuated because it affected everybody. Pepper spray actually is very effective. I've been pepper sprayed. It hurts, it works. It's not life threatening and it is a very good tool. Something one of our control tactics team instructors brought to our attention was, is there's a gel version. I never knew this. So we told them, please explore that. And they came in a demo and this is a jail. It's not a mist. It's more of a direct fire. Out the, out the can and right on to a person. With little to zero effect, hopefully on anybody else around unless there might be some splatter coming off of someone or something. Ricochet off of an object. The second part of why this gel option might be good is there's an aftercare product that comes with it. Normal pepper spray, when you get sprayed, it's basically sit and wait. And you gotta wait and you gotta wait until it's done cooking on your skin. This has some kind of topical cream or something and you apply it to the person it was applied on. And it drastically reduces the effects and it pretty much stops it. Which is pretty wild because everybody that's been pepper sprayed wants it to stop. So we're going to look more into that, which I, which I think is going to be a good option as well. Recommendation number five kind of falls on to the employees. We want our employees to be healthy, want them to be happy physically, mentally. We have a peer support team here. That really is great for the individuals to fall back on. We strive to push and organize a physical fitness program. Anything we can do to try to build a wellbeing so that they can provide a good service. And provide a quality product and come to work excited, knowing that people here to back them up. Knowing if they have a problem, they can talk to somebody. And hopefully that can just help the overall product that they can produce for our community. Recommendation number six, May of two thousand twenty-one, a use of force incident was triggered by the Springfield Police Department. The force review board found some recommendations, which I noted in this report. And some of those recommendations are to reinforce additional options, for instance. Using a trained negotiator on a scene. When the situation becomes static, start, start using more options and more resources that we have available. Don't be shy to ask for more help or to say, hey, what we're doing is not working. What should we do? Emphasize more on de-escalation training and update for the CIT refresher classes that was involving recommendation number one. Also, we recommended that dispatchers be included in the department, the escalation training. I think that's very well to include them here at Springfield. Our dispatch is in-house. They're not. Off-site or service. We know each other. I think it's very important that. We all are on the same page as a team and kind of have the same training. I think that's very, very important. Policy recommendations in that it says if a supervisor on ship. Is involved in like a use of force incident that they're going to be on the board. The chief, I think that's very, very awkward because they're actually subject to being reviewed themselves as part of the force review board. Part of that is, is was the supervision done right and to go through that. So we think it's. We think we need to remove the supervisor from being on the board and implement another, another supervisor. So the conclusion, and I'm sure a lot of the questions is, how does this compare to last year? Because I wanted to know that the whole time doing this thing too. From what I can tell, we're down. A little bit, but it's, we can't compare it the same because we do not have IA Pro. We basically used Excel in two thousand twenty, to be honest. So from this year, this is going to be our baseline foundation and we're going to tweak some things and customize some areas that we think will. Reduce the fogginess of some of the, the data or categories. And we're going to move forward from there and try to create a baseline to just always go off of every year. I'm still confident that this is a really good system. I think it's really good for our officers. It's going to have accountability. And total transparency and we can ask questions and pull data from this thing super fast. And learn trends or what's happening and what's not that we've never, ever had before. This is a totally new thing for us. And I'm, I'm super excited that we have it and I look forward to seeing really what its full potential is. Because to be honest, we're still driving this new software on training wheels. It, it is a very big, good system. And I, I know it has lots of. And I, I know it has lots of capability that we haven't tapped into yet. So I'm ready for questions if anybody has any that I didn't answer within there or that wanted to find in the bottom of the report.
All right, we're gonna start through the questions and pretty much everybody's got questions now, so we're gonna give them to you rapid fire style, Joe.
Do it.
Oh, thank you. Hey, uh. Mike, if you can go back on your page, uh, page nine of eighteen, you indicate the effectiveness and methods uh for methods and tools of force. You indicate it towards the bottom where it says forty millimeter non-lethal. I'm really concerned about the terminology on that. Do, are you using, uh, what rounds are you using that forty millimeter meter? Do you have exact direct wood baton bean batag or bean? Bag or rubber ball rounds, which ones do EPD or Springfield PD carries?
For the forty millimeter?
Yeah.
It's those like blue tipped sponge round things, I believe.
Okay, so those are, I think those are called a uh direct impact or exact impact, probably direct impact. So on those, um, they even say on that round case not to be deployed less than thirty-three feet away from a subject, so. It's or potential that uh serious or death could result, so. So I'm looking at and I'm looking to say maybe just a simple twist of that term to, so we won't find ourselves in a corner. By just simply writing, you know, going right back to the forty millimeter less than lethal. As opposed, as opposed to non-lethal, because I think they actually can be lethal, depends upon the, the contact area when that's, when those are deployed in the distance from deployment.
Okay, yeah, I had a hard time trying to find proper beverage for lots, I appreciate that feedback. I'll talk to the um. The control tactic people about exactly what they're called.
Yeah, and plus that doesn't, and plus that doesn't limit you for what kind of rounds in the future you may want to purchase for the forty millimeter. You could go to rubber balls or wood baton and those are, you know, those are definitely not non-lethal rounds, so.
Okay.
Just didn't wanna see you box yourself in a corner. And then on the, uh, when you're going back to your recommendations and recommendations three and four, I think are really tied together when you were talking about. Uh, leg and hand strike, and I'm really glad you expanded on the pepper spray options. I know that uh one thing I wanna caution you folks is that you'll find that the gel OC that's deployed. That same material can be gathered up on that person's face and thrown back on the officers. So that, so you wanna maybe look at a pepper spray that comes, comes out. As a foam and then effredescence to a liquid on that person's face, so it's less likely to be gathered up.
Okay.
And so you ha- and, and again, those leg hand strikes, the, the data that you have, you really brought up a good sub, a, a good uh part of that. Is that I think you really need to look at, you know, a lot of old school training, a lot of old school uh training officers uh go right to hands on. And I think you need to look at, okay, from what distance were they initiating that contact by moving in on that subject to, for example, the self-extraction. Or and or removal of a vehicle, do they uh? In other words, they weren't immediately had to re- to, to go to a hands-on leg takedown or leg kick. Because of the proximity, they're right on top of them versus moving in on somebody and using that tactic, so I think those are two different things. And where, if they're moving in on a person, I think there's a much higher uh need for, for going to an option, force option such as OC first. And, and there is many different varieties of OC out there, um for sure, you know, stream, stream, fog, mist, whatever. But uh, that's something I would like to see that, would, did they move in on a person and use a hand strike or leg strike? Or did they have to because of a immediate defensive reaction? So I, I think that plays a big role. And then uh also as far as the material to clean up, dish soap with that cuts oil is perfect for pepper spray, by the way. And I think those are really the only two things. I think that report was very complete and I really appreciate your thoroughness. On this and it, and it clears up a lot of things in my mind and I hopefully clears up a lot of things in um the citizen's mind.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You bet.
Right, so before we continue, could we maybe drop the slides so we can uh get a better view of everybody? Thank you, um, I'm gonna go with Leonard.
Um, thanks, uh, well, uh, good news first, uh, no fatalities, that's um, that, that's a most welcome development and uh. Happy to see it. I was also uh happy to see that the hand-leg strikes were only nine point one percent of the uses of force, but. As you did say, the uh. Uh, hand-leg strikes also caused thirty-two percent of the injuries. Do you have any kind of statistics on how many times de-escalation was attempted before the land-leg strikes were used? This is sort of a, um, I guess a sideways um approach to counselor missionary's question.
Yeah, um. I don't on this because a, a lot of this was backdated and the policy before. Um, some of it might not have had a de-escalation is part of our use of force now, so usually by the time it gets to that now, that should have been attempted and.
You know that it was?
No, I didn't pull each, each of these up, I'm going off of the uh back dated data.
Okay, um, and uh the, the other question I um, I, I did wanna ask, um, is. At, at what point in the continuum is our hand-leg strikes used? I, I, first of all, a, a leg strike, is that a kick? Is that pretty much what, what that is? I mean.
They, or it could be like a sweep of the legs or like a knee.
But that'd be a takedown, right? A leg, uh, a sweep, a sweep of the leg?
Yeah, it just kind of depends on how they did it. I mean, we're, they're trying to learn and go off these big pick lists, but it would be. A leg strike probably is more. I don't know if I've seen leg strikes, that, that's more like a karate move, well, I probably that would apply more to like a knee, a knees of somebody.
Okay, so uh, uh, so it would normally be either a knee or a, uh, and in the case of a hand, it would be. I, it would probably be a hand to the face.
Yeah, or, or anywhere and it could be a kick too.
Hey, hey, you'll get your turn. Um, so um, anyway, uh, it, I, I, I guess what I wanna know is where in the escalation of force? Does the hand and leg strike come in?
Um, it could be, there's lots of differences. We don't really run off of the continuum. Um, but that definitely, if somebody. If you're saying, you know, you're trying to place them in the custody and you know they have a weapon or something and they're diving into their pockets. Yeah, you can deliver those strikes. Cause you're trying to get them to basically, you know, be out and get the hands out.
Comply.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think uh councillor missionary actually asked a very good question on how many instances were the um. The uh subject uh advancing on the officer and how many times were the officer advancing on the subject? That'd be very useful information.
I'm making all these notes for the.
All right, we're merely.
I have a curious question and, and that is regarding the, the programming. You talked about uh looking, researching for trends, trying to pay attention to trends. Um, is it possible to know what the parameters or know what, what would be realistically in the indicative of a trend? Could you program that into the programming, the software you have that would flag a trend for you?
Yeah, that it does have, it's called early um early identifier warnings essentially. Um, basically, it's gonna say, you know, like the leg hand strike, let's say if we put it, put it in there and we're still trying to figure out, you know, if we're gonna use it or what numbers. Um, if we put, you know, if we say the officer, we're gonna make a limit for ten leg or hand strikes. Once they hit ten, it shoots an alarm off and sends me a thing. And we look at that and is it? Is there a problem there or is it, is this an employee who works a million hours of overtime, so he just has more exposure than another person? There's, there's deeper into the weeds we go with it if we want to, but yeah, you can do that. It even does it for vehicle pursuits and everything.
Okay, that's, I, that's what I was curious about, because it, it sounds like would be very handy and it would save you folks time. Uh, if you're trying to look for something specific, it would already be there for you, um.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's the good thing of this is that, that's what we used to do, is spend a lot of time looking and this thing doesn't look for us.
Right, right, yes, otherwise, I, I appreciate the uh degree of this report that this report was done and. Especially in comparison to previous, I, I look forward to being able to compare in the future. Uh, and, and seeing how it lines up year to year at being able to use this software. So thank, recognize all the work.
Thank you.
Uh, Corey.
Thank you. Um, I very much appreciate this report and I appreciate you, you digging into the pieces of it and. Having this as a baseline moving forward and my, I don't really have questions, but I have some suggestions. Um, uh, and I wanna sort of dig in and encourage us to sort of dig into some of the nuances. Um, particularly around the demographics, one of the things that I would love to see. Um, we're tra- we're tracking male and female, um, and I've mentioned this before, if there's a way to track. Um, gender non-conforming or folks that maybe are not being um interpreted based on. Male or female in terms of gender, because I think that's an important piece for us to consider. Um, the other thing I'm interested in is how do we connect the demographics to um the, what happens? So it's one thing to say, here's what's happening and here's how many people and here's, you know, black, white, Latino, Latino, Latinx, that sort of thing. But to connect that to the necessary, to maybe the escalation or the perceived danger or. What happens in terms of injuries and by that, I mean, I'm interested in seeing if. Are folks of certain demographics more likely to be injured and I'm not just interested in that in terms of um. Folks who are being arrested, but also our officers. And we don't have any demographics here in terms of who, who are our officers and who are the people who are answering these calls, but I'm also interested in. Tying those injuries that are happening for officers to demographics, so. Are you more likely to be injured if you fit, if you're a female officer or are you more likely to be um injured in a certain situation? So I think those are ways that we can start to really get into the, the kind of culture of our organization and start to really lean into. If, if we're gonna really take care of both our officers and our community members, thank you.
Thank you.
Damian.
Hey, y'all, um, so my first question is. Is it possible for uh Springfield residents to be uh? A part of any section or segment of the crisis intervention training uh to. Uh, I, I'm just curious, you know, I mean, I understand that, you know, physical and mental. Well-being and things like that, I'm just, I, I, I want a little bit more. Information about what are some of the things that you might do that are gonna, you know. Support, you know, physical and mental health, but then also uh potentially humanize. Certain citizens that in the eyes of some. Citizens and, you know, uh, law enforcement officials might not be seen as. As hu- as much a human a- as others, so yeah, those questions.
Um, so the CIT, that's gonna be more for the, the officers to. Learn how to handle kind of uncomfortable situations they're not used to, you know, it's usually involving the people. With mental health and then the other part, I think, will you tie into the, the well-being of the officers, like the peer support, that, kind of doing that, you mean? How, how are we incorporating the? Uh, wellness for the officers, is that what you're referring to?
Right, uh, I mean, so I, I guess kind of what I'm getting at is like, what are some of the things that uh can be done that will? Uh, get the officers in the community as citizens where they'll connect with other citizens. Which adds some layer of humanity to things which could potentially lower. Uh, certain types of run-ins with certain individuals.
Yeah, I definitely. I ha- I mean, I hate, I, COVID made everybody disappear and go under their, their houses, but. It's super important for the police officers to interact with the community and not be, you know, kind of looked at as we don't wanna talk to them. Or we can't approach them, we need all of our officers approachable and be able to talk to everybody the same. And really, the only way I think, the best way to do that is to just do it. To be honest with you. Just start having everybody interact and do these community events again and, you know, we do things where we try to. You know, invite community members coffee with the cop or, you know, anything we wanna, you know, I think the chief will back me up on this, we'll go. We're invited, we'll go. And, you know, we're, we'll take feedback and we like being a part of it. You know, there's obviously part of these, the CIT training is there's specialized training on, you know, interacting with. You know. Different people or different capacities or everything else like that, that kind of, you know, takes them a step back and realize that there's. There's all raised alive, just not criminals out there, so that's part of what CIT does as well. And we have people within our organization who are the CIT instructors and we send them off. To bring back the training to help us in-house. And one of them was supposed, supposed to go this month, but it's now been uh moved to April or May and then she's gonna come back. That answer your question? Thank you, sir.
All right, um, I've got a couple of questions here. First of all, I thought, I thought the call out about the hand-leg strikes and looking at the corresponding data was. Like that was the first thing that popped out to me as well, right? Just for the frequency of being used plus the amount of injuries that it's creating for. For officers and suspects, it was definitely something that, that, that stood out uh for me. Could you help me understand more about how you're measuring effectiveness? So if something's effective, what, what does that actually mean in the use of force report?
So basically they're putting in there, if they used a taser, they're gonna check the box taser and it's gonna ask them, was it effective or not? Yes or no?
So.
And then if it's no, then it says like, did you use something else? And then it says, yes, I use that, was that effective? Yes, that's how it works.
So, okay, so if for, so it's uh maybe a measurement to sort of gain compliance, if you will, right? So i- if it's effective, some, they've complied with whatever we're asking them to do at that point.
Correct, it's a company, it's the effectiveness of the compliance, not the actual. Yes.
Okay. So, did, when, when you look at the, wh- when you get the data cut, sort of coming back and the reports coming back. Are people also looking at to see if the, if we actually, I don't know, if the, the initial order, the initial uh decision. Uh, that what, what we were asking to comply with, if, if that what, that on its own was, we, we essentially did the right thing.
Yes, that's part of that approval process, that's the double layer of approval is, you know, something we wanna look at is. Did this really need to happen? Was there something that occurred? Was there a conversation that didn't go well and it, and it kind of created this? Yes, they look at all that, let me turn my lights back on.
That's time too, maybe, maybe the chief can put, you know, the power bill back in the. Um, so in, and I would assume if, if you look at, if you look at an incident sort of end to end, right? Like when we provide sort of coaching and training, we're, we're doing it, we're, we're provide, since we're looking at it end to end, you know, if I'm an officer, you're gonna come. Uh, come back to me and coach me sort of end to end from the start of the incident all the way through, through the end of it, is, is that accurate?
Uh, well, they're gonna review it that way, yes, and the supervisors will provide feedback if they think there's anything.
Okay, um, the other thing that I thought was um interesting, like. I was a big fan of how transparent we were getting with, with um, with counting incidents, when you were, in the report, it's upfront. Um, we're, we're, even if it involves sort of one suspect, you know, we're just being really transparent with what, what actually is happening there. Do we track how many incidents of force are used per suspect? Right, because you give us a total count of how, of how many times we did things, but I don't, we don't know if that's a hundred and ninety people, we, we know that that. It's just a hundred and ninety sort of, of things. It would be really ca- might be concerning if it was, depending on how many folks were involved.
Yeah, it would be very concerning if the number was five, for sure, five different people, so in this case, there's a hundred and ninety events. On a hundred and seventy-four different individuals. So a small handful had more than one thing occur.
Okay, um, the other piece that uh really jumped out in the report was the difference between. Mean and median fro- from an officer perspective, I know that that is sort of maybe phase two. Um, could you maybe talk a little bit about, you know, are we sort of comparing um? Individual off, it's not in the report, right, but how, how many uses of force individual officers have? Because it's clear in the, from the data that you do have, that some people are using force more than others.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent accurate. We do have that, the chief and I ran that because we were curious. Um, that definitely is a number that you need. We need to follow it and we will. Um, but you also have to look at it more and that is, you know, then we can get a whole payroll and say, how many hours did this employee work? A normal employee, forty hours a week is two thousand eighty hours in a year. We have some employees working five thousand hours a year. So by virtue of that much exposure, one, that's, that's a lot to work. But they're going to have more exposure to things because they're working more. And is it? Is it because of that or is it because there's a problem? And we definitely look at that and we will be dissecting that going forward. We just, you know. Putting our toes in the water with this system and that's definitely something we want to continue to look at. And if we see something, we'll, you know, try to get to the foundation of what's really behind it, opposed to just the number that first sticks out in us.
So, and that's, and that's the piece that I think, like, when we do the report again, I would love to, I would love to see. And I am open to, uh, the PD bringing more statistics to make that make sense of it. Because I think just comparing sort of frequency per, uh, officer is not going to tell the entire story, but we also want to. Sort of take a look at, you know, broader, you know, hours worked, right? How many arrests, you know, just a lot of, there, there's a lot of potential other detail that's going on. Um, and then the, I guess the last thing I really wanted to end with is you started by saying this was the second report. This is actually the third report. And I think that's an important, um, that's an important detail because. Every time we've done this, the first report was a pie chart. The second report you guys went through and you dug out everything out of Excel and looked at individual reports. To put it together. And the third report, right, was much more data driven and the data integrity piece was here. And the reason I bring that up is because, right, like that's how continuous improvement actually happens, right? So when, when we see version four of this report, we're going to have more detail and more learnings about it and I would. I'm, I'm just encouraging you guys to keep leaning in and being as transparent as possible with the data. And what you're doing with it and how it's actually changing because, you know, we're, we're all only asking questions at this point. The last thing I think is really important here, and I'm in favor of this, is the PD having conversations with sort of Eugene and. Um, the sheriff's department and just asking the question, do we track things the same way? Um, I know that it's all over the board about how people, uh, how, how people track this sort of data. And if, from a professional perspective, if people are on the same page, it may make this conversation easier.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And the chief and I want to be a hundred percent transparent and some people don't like a lot of data. That's why we bought this thing is to throw the data out there. It's worthless if we're not doing it. There's definitely some bumps involving the hours work thing because of how overtime works and contract stuff, but we can. Look into that and identify any issues and try to get ahead of that. I do know Eugene police does use this, the same software. They're years ahead of us. Uh, the program coordinator for. Um, is very helpful and I owe, I owe her a lot of coffee for my question. You know, the chief got approval for a crime analyst to be assigned to my office and that's going to be basically, they're going to be running this IA pro. Uh, train and really become fluent with it. And it's, it's, it's a very in-depth system that needs somebody to focus on it to do exactly what you're asking. The sheriff's department, I'm not sure what they use or not, but I definitely, because we're always compared to Eugene, I do agree, we do need to be kind of on the same. Um, you know, table of how are we reporting this? Because we're constantly be, you know, or now you're separated by a freeway and a, and a river. So. I agree that we probably should be trying to collect it the same way, or at least. If we're not, explain why we're not doing the, the way they do.
Yeah. So let me give you my, like, from a priority perspective, right? I would rather be more transparent than aligned with Eugene. Right? And, you know, when we always tell that story, we always are like, oh, we should track it similar to Eugene. Well, maybe Eugene should track it similar to us. But I, but I also, uh, want to kind of come back to the mean and median question and I, and I want, want to make this observation. I think it's important that we get to that level of detail. And I think it's really important that, like, that we scrub, like, that we scrub the individual employee names out of it, right? So like, if we talk about bringing that forward, I know that. That you guys as a group will deal with the employee issues. I want to make sure that, you know, you sort of. You, you sort of, uh, anonymize the data if, if you put in the report in the future.
Okay.
Joe.
Thank you, Sean. So, uh, it brings up, I was, I just got this thing is haunting me. So. You have a, you, you run twelve hour shifts. You're talking about officers that may run five K hours a year. But I'm all, I, I, what really has concerned me from the get-go is the twelve hour shift and then we're talking about. Officer that I'm thinking of officer fatigue. And, and which is a real thing and, and everybody knows it in that field, uh, in that profession. Um, I'm curious, has anybody possibly taken a look at? Uses of force. At the, you know, you have a twelve hour shift, but then you have that, that it's possible to run five thousand hours by just adding four hours, which is. Sixteen hours a day. So that's where you get the double, double hours. So, but I'm curious. And if anybody else has been curious, as far as the uses of force on those last, uh, the incidents. The occasion of use of force in that last four hours, is that? Uh, I know that, that decision-making process, et cetera, is slowed or hampered somewhat due to exhaustion and I'm. I'm curious as to, are we setting up? Or is it being unintentionally set up to where that last four hours of overtime? Is placing the officers in a position in which they may be using more force than in normal hours when they are rested? And I know it's obscure, but it, I think, I think that IA pro could. Probably pull that out. I don't know. But I think it'd be interesting.
Well, I don't think it makes it down five thousand. That was just a number I threw up. Those guys have worked some overtime.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, same here. I would, that would, I would, I'm like, so like.
I would know. You know, the Lily's. And maybe looking at that, but that would have to tie into payroll and. Sure. I mean, it's two thousand twenty-two. I mean, there's all kinds of things we could probably figure out and just might take in that, but.
It just seems that if it's, if it may be something that could be an identified risk, then it would be, it would be definitely worth. Not only for the officer's wellbeing, but also for potentially a heightened use of force during that time, that window. And, and if I'm wrong, it may be that officers that are working that many hours are too tired to get into stuff. That, that could cause that type of thing. Cause I've seen it that way also. So, but I think, I think it would be, if it's not too difficult, I think it would be. Worth our effort to look at that and see if we can pull an anomaly out of just our shifting issues.
Okay, I'll see if, I'll see if there has the capability for that.
Right. Chief.
Yeah, I know you're running a long time. I just wanted to touch on what counselor visionary said. So I know a few will work overtime, but we have taken very deliberate steps in the last few months. To limit the amount of consecutive hours an employee can work to sixteen hours. We have what's called a safety release time. Where I, I, obviously if there's a critical emergency, we can hold people over, but we're not going to allow anybody to work more than sixteen consecutive hours. So that's a step we've taken because I think it is. Yeah, I, I think it is, um, the data shows that if somebody were lacking sleep, that it's going to impact their decision-making negative ways. And the last thing we want to do is have an officer make a bad decision, fall asleep, driving a car, hurt somebody, hurt themselves. So we, we've taken, we, we've taken steps to mitigate some of that.
I appreciate that, chief. We did, the deputy, or the sheriff's office did lose a deputy with head-on collisions after a long shift. So there's, there's that, but also while working can make a big difference.
Lilly.
I was just gonna talk a little bit from the data analysis perspective. Um, that is definitely. Something that can be analyzed. It's, uh, like tiredness and fatigue is definitely a subjective. Um, aspect of like an officer shift. Um, but there, there is a way to, um, look at force incidents and shows of force. Um, over the course of like time of day, um, night versus day. Um, well, at areas versus, you know, you're in the sunlight versus in a dark alley. Um, and there, there are ways where. Um, I could potentially look and see like is. Um, a high number of use of force incidents in the last twenty-five percent of an officer's day or. You know, in the first half of the day, um, it's definitely analyzing the tiredness part and the fatigue part is a little subjective, but. Um, finding where events fall in the course of a day is definitely possible.
All right. Thank you.
One, good, last, okay. Uh, did I hear you say that, uh, dispatch is exposed to training?
Uh, one of.
Do you know what happens at the other end type thing?
Say that again, sorry.
Dispatches. Are, are they exposed to the training? So they know when they're dispatching, what's happening at the other end?
That is, um, part of incorporating them. That's what we want to do.
Okay.
Is include them in that, yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm curious. I dial nine one one here now. How the heck do I get Springfield dispatch to a Springfield situation?
Uh, you call nine one one and they'll probably say, what's the address of your emergency?
Yes.
And they will detect it as a Springfield address. They will pre-ajust it and get the bare minimum information. And then they will tell you, or you probably don't even know, but they're calling our dispatch and saying, hey, we have a Springfield one for you. Then they transfer you.
So it's transferred to Springfield for actual Springfield dispatch?
Yes.
Okay, I was, it, it is. Something the other night, University Bergen Police use, uh, Junction City for their nine one one, which I thought was. Sort of interesting. I don't know why that is, but it must be a reason, but.
All right. Then it looks like that was all the questions. Um, chief, did you have anything else to add before we, uh, let you go?
Um, I just want to really recognize Sergeant Massey again, a little like for all the work they put into this. I think they did a very thorough job. I think we can all agree that. There is a lot more that we can do, both training wise for our people here at SPD. And there's also a lot more we can do with this software and the data collection to help kind of guide where we move in, in the future. And I'm committed to focusing on that moving ahead. I think we're all committed to continuous improvements. Um, I, I'm impressed with what I pro can do, but I know like Sergeant Massey said, we're just scratching the surface of what's available and. The more that we put into it, the more we can get out. And so this year, I think is a good start, but I think we could expect even better things moving forward.
All right. Well, thanks for your time, chief. Um, it's, it looks like we're going to see you again in the fall for, for another police update. So we're looking forward to that conversation. Um, then have a great night. Um, for, we're going to adjourn and then. Re, uh, reconvene in an executive session. So we will see, uh, the rest of the council and the staff on the other side. We are adjourned. Thank you.